Twenty-five South and Prospector Drive. Real quickly, I'll hit two things. The first thing is, I thought we'd kinda... I don't know the whole political process. And we looked online, we didn't see anything online. But we got a... My wife got an email from a friend that... Out of this neighborhood app that said, hey, by the way, your thing's not done. You think it's done. It's still gotta be voted by the council. So the process, obviously, we got it wrong. We didn't have any time to prepare. Gather up neighbors. Six thousand, somebody's saying you need six thousand, you know, that would help, six thousand signatures that say you don't want it?
I think we're talking about two different things.
We are?
Six thousand signatures is for a referendum regarding the northwest quadrant of our city regarding the Walsh property?
Okay, not interested in that, my apologies.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. I'm trying to get more involved because I don't know a whole lot about it. Here's the situation. And I have no problem, and we live right next door to where this is gonna be built. I got no problem with a nice, single-family home. The fact of the matter is, when you do walk up the street, there's a snow issue on the sidewalks. You got people that are renting that don't care. I've talked to many of those guys and said, why don't you do this? Well, we rent. We rent. Why don't you pull the weeds, huh? We're renters. I make a phone call to Breen, the gentleman. I forget his first name. I said, what are you planning on doing with the property? And this is the same thing I said with the other planning commission. He said, I plan on selling one half. I wanna change it from R18. It's gonna be medium density, it's not gonna be a big deal. And I said, boy, I don't want any renters, man. I can't tell you what to do with your own property because you've got the money, you can do what you want, you're a builder. It's great. What are you doing with the other half? Well, I'm gonna live in it, but then I'm gonna rent it out in the wintertime. And I'm gonna have a little, you know, have some funds come in from that. Okay, I didn't think we can do that. I don't know if he's gonna do it with an, you know, Airbnb or what he's gonna do, but bottom line, I've been told I can't do it when I've asked people, what if we... Olympics coming, I wanna do it for a month. Can't do it, or, you know, can't do it. So the issue, another issue is, which may not be important to you guys, but, you know, we plan on retiring here. And a lot of that retirement, getting that paid off in another 16 years, I don't want the value going down, and it may not even be a value issue. It's a rental issue for a fact because I heard it from the head of horse. It concerns me that those places up the street that are a couple duplexes up a half a mile, those are in a situation where if they burn down, they're not zoned R28 anymore. They are zoned R18. So if something burns down, they've gotta build a single-family home.
They can replace with the same thing that was there within a year.
Within a year? Okay. Now, I'm reading stuff.
We just asked the same question back there, that's why.
You did. I would love you to, I mean, wherever I could find that because I'm talking to real estate guys, I'm talking to other guys that are saying, no, man, it's gotta be...
Yeah, Mike Johnson right there is the one.
Okay, I've taken a lot of time.
And he'll do a presentation. No, 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 you took it three minutes, and we appreciate it. And we appreciate the comments, very valuable information.
I wish I was more prepared.
No, you did very well, very well.
Mayor, do you mind if I respond?
Please go right ahead, make a response, yeah.
The process on any land use decision like that is it goes to the planning commission first for recommendation to the council. And so while the neighbors did come to the planning commission and they were apparently heard there, the process for all land use, and that particular... Comes to the council with their recommendation for final approval or denial. And so that's just a standard process that we go through on a whole.
Is it your main to your decision that only one person on that planning voted yes?
Could be, that's up to... Yeah, that's up to us.
All right. Anyone else? All right, go ahead, Lynn. Because you were really short last time, so why are you taking...
I'm gonna be really short this time. So this business about, within one year, they can rebuild as a whatever? That's not what was told to the planning commission.
Well, I'm just, okay, I'm just saying that we asked the question earlier in the pre-meeting that if there was a duplex on that site and it burned down, would they have to build a single resident? Or could they build what was there? And what we were told was they could build an additional duplex within...
That's fabulous, that's not what was told to the planning commission.
Okay. I apologize, I wasn't there, but that's what I was told today, so... Yeah, all right. Let's move on. Anyone else in the audience who would like to share a comment? Edie, come on up.
Throw something at me, you're kidding me.
I left my...
Pull the microphone down.
ADU wage. I left my ADU wage at home. And tonight, I just want to spill out on my heart and tell you how it is breaking. My tears can run. All the break that is coming in our neighborhood. Our R1 neighborhood is breaking up because of the ADU. You don't look to your right or your left when you pick up your mail or your newspaper because what's your neighbor thinking? It is the most awful thing that has ever happened in my life, living here for 49 years. I can't even believe why this had to happen. There is all those good people here. There is the planning people that I have always liked and considered having a brain and understand how to plan. Why haven't our city... Why don't we have a city center? Why don't we look like a city? Do you have to take in all the outside beautiful neighborhoods? Why can't we just have some apartment buildings? I have mentioned it before. Put them on all those dead places you have. I see the city is putting in wherever they have an empty block or an empty house area. They put in apartments or some kind of housing. I do not find that our neighborhood should be responsible for helping the poor to find a place. That is our community, our state, our city. And I do not want to see things change. I may only estimate that there might be half of the people feeling like me, but we are the ones that bought into the right of having an R1 neighborhood on a peaceful, pristine mountainside. Whoever came there years ago and can't afford living there, maybe it is time to sell your home, go somewhere else, and have fun for your money. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. All right. So Brian, you already spoke, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anyone else who would like to provide some comments to the council? If not, we appreciate those comments. And we'll now go to our standing monthly reports. Scott, our monthly financial report, come on up.
Excuse me. All right. So when we're looking through these, I've got some old graphs and I've got some new graphs. And so we're kinda bouncing some things off of you to see how you like the different ones as we move forward, maybe. Okay. So this is the graph that we altered a little bit last time. The lines show both the expected or budget, if you will, and which is the red line. The green line shows the actual that we're receiving. And then the purple square, or not square, triangle shows the year-to-date actual. And then the blue shows our prior-year actual. And so you can kinda get some ideas there. However, when we talked last time, we talked about... We talked about going to the, something like this, a stacked bar graph. So the blue line in the first column represents our budget. Our budget, just, I don't have a label on that, but I think I'm gonna add a label to that for next month. It's $6,241,000 for sales tax. You can see the second column, stacked column, you can see the different months that we've received. So we've received six months' worth of sales tax data at this point in time. So that's 50% of the year. We're sitting at 50.92% of our budget. So we're slightly ahead in our sales taxes. And then you can see fiscal year 2018 and also 2017 in there for kind of a reference basis. Does this get you better information than you've got in the past from a graphical perspective? Or do you like the old, I'll say the old, before or after?
The only piece of information on this chart that means anything to me is the second bar.
Okay.
Those are too spread out, honestly, for me to be able to make much of a comparison for the previous years.
Okay. Would you like me to squish them all together, or...
I would go to a dot graph, but I know that may not be the preference at all. And if I was gonna choose the two, I would do the other one.
Okay. This one? Okay. I'm okay with whatever way you wanna go.
And I personally like the bar graphs. I'm not sure you need the... It looks like Dr. Seuss with all the colors, but...
Wanna call for a vote?
No.
I don't like the Dr. Seuss colors, so...
I can leave them both in. There's not a problem doing that, too.
They both work, so...
Because there, I think you can glean different information off of them.
I think you're saying like on the graph on the left, which is 219, having a total at the top, the 6.2 whatever it is, and having that comparison is... That's what I'm looking at, is to see where we are. We're 51% of the year and we're over 50% of the goal. That's a good indication to me, yeah. I would be concerned if it said we were 40-some percent and we're 50% of the year, then that would be a red flag, yeah.
So then, moving on to the next graph. The next graph here is municipal energy tax versus our budget. And this one, the green line is our actuals. The blue line is the 2018 actual, and the red line is the 2019 budget. And so if you look here, we do have a couple months where we're a little bit above our budget, but we also have months where we're below our budget. It's a little bit hard to kinda tell where you are at a year-to-date basis. So again, I made a similar stacked bar graph here. Our budget is $2,075,96. So I'm not sure how we came to that specific amount, but we got real specific in how we wanted that to go. This one, however, like you were referring to, Mayor, we're slightly behind because this one, we've actually received seven months' worth of revenues. We're at 58.6% when we should be at 58.33%.
Well, and also if it's energy, some months would be greater amounts.
It is true, but we're right in the midst of our greatest months right now. We've received through January. And so the incidence, this relates to power and to gas. We're right in the midst of our most months.
Also, if you compare straight across, you can see where we're behind 2018.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can kinda see which months are your bigger months and so on and so forth. And it looks like in 2017, we might've got some delayed revenues in there because it's showing February is quite large and January is small. But anyhow, you can kinda see some trends.
But Mike makes a good point. That's easy to see when you look at the blue compared to the blue right across.
Yeah. Now, the good thing on this one is you're not talking $6 million worth of total budgeted revenues. So if we miss this one a little bit, right now, we're thinking we might miss it by $20,000, but we'll make up for that with going over a little bit in our sales taxes. So it's not quite as bad of an impact on that. However, as people get more efficient furnaces put in their houses and things like that, this will probably not grow. We don't see a lot of actual growth to our community, i.e. new houses added, new businesses added. We see more retrofitting of existing going, say, from maybe a 70% efficient furnace to a 90% efficient furnace. Things like that going to LED lights. And that will all affect the revenues that are associated with this.
This shows me that all of 2017 and all of 2018 were pretty close.
They're very, very close. There's not a lot of fluctuation. But if you count that we are adding a few houses, maybe, you know, up to 100 houses a year, they're not having that much of an impact in our overall energy use during that timeframe.
If there was a way to add that total year-to-date where we were in 18 and 17, that would make it easier to compare the bars.
Yeah, and again, sometimes it gets a little screwed up because of the reporting from the entities that report. If you look back to February of 2017, that's huge. And so what that tells me is whatever happened in January didn't quite get reported accurately. And it looks like it even extended into March of 2018. And sometimes we're at the whims of when those items get reported by the companies that are collecting the revenue. So, but we can definitely do that. Class C roads funds. If you remember, this is one that I've been concerned about that we might miss by up to $100,000. The gray bar that's through there is roughly halfway through the year, and we were significantly behind the past two years. However, then again, you get November, December drop in there, and we're always two months behind on this one and when we recognize it because of the collection period. But we're much closer to where we were in the past two years when this has been collected. And so we're gonna kinda hold our breath a little bit and see where we get on this. I don't think we'll be $100,000 below, but we'll be below maybe, you know, $50,000, $40,000 somewhere at the end of the year. Again, I think we'll make that up in our sales taxes. So I don't think that we'll overall be behind in our revenues, but it is something that we need to be aware of again as we move forward. Any questions on this one? This one is our general fund expenditure trend versus budget. Again, the green line is our 2019 actuals. Our, the yellow or, well, I guess it's not yellow, it's either orange or red line, is the 2019 budget. And then the blue line is our 2018 actuals. I think that this one has some good to it, but it's very difficult to say, well, where are we to date? You know, are we ahead, behind, or where are we at? I do think having maybe both this one and, again, I made a stacked bar graph here moving forward so that we can look at this. Our total budget for expenses is $16,852,663. That's the big blue line. The stacked bar graph where we're at, we're 66.67% through the year. We're currently spent at 65.81% of our budget. So there's a little bit of room in there, but there's not a lot. But if you were to make an easy line across there, we're very much in line to where our expenditures were in prior years in terms of overall expense to date. Now, sometimes we have expenditures that are accelerated a month or delayed a month as we just, maybe we don't get an invoice on time, or maybe we're questioning something, or maybe we get it and for convenience sake, we're paying it maybe a few days early, but it lands in the end of a month. So there are sometimes things that impact this that could, again, drive some fluctuations as you look at the month-over-month comparisons with prior years. But I think we're in a good place as we move forward on our general fund expenditures. This is specifically related to payroll. So our payroll is, our year-to-date actual is the blue. Our budget year-to-date is the orange or red, whatever color that happens to come across to you. We're slightly ahead on payroll. Again, that's gonna be predominantly due to the payout of severance that we had, which the, adding the $50,000 to the budget that we hoped it gets adopted here should help to fix that. On the benefits side, which is the middle column, we're slightly below. Again, that's partially due to some turnover and other things, but as we go through that, we're just slightly below. And then on the combined, we're just so, so close. We're, on our projections, literally, I think we're gonna end the year with salary and benefits right now within $50,000 of the total budget, which, when you're talking $8 million, it gets a little bit nerve-wracking when you're getting to that tight of a budget base on that. And again, this is our total budget expenditures in our different government groupings. So general government would include, like, mayor and council. It would include city manager, it would include my divisions. It would include, I'm trying to think, IT, HR, cultural, and event. Trying to think if there's any other items that would be in there. That kind of stuff, though. And we're slightly ahead right now, but once we juggle the budget says like we did before, it'll, we'll be basically right on. In the public safety, they're just a hair below where they should be. And that's, again, gonna be police, code enforcement, and fire that's included in there. In public works, they're a little bit behind year-to-date where they are from in their budget, which is a good thing, especially considering the snow events that we've had because they haven't been insignificant this year. So that's a good thing. And then on community development, over to the right, you're very close, but slightly below budget. And in a general sense, back to the graph from just a little bit ago, we are a little bit below budget in our general fund. So I don't see anything that is causing me great concern at this point in time. The other packet that you have, the little pamphlet packet that you have, I don't know that there's anything in there that I wanna necessarily bring to your attention, but if you do have questions, I would be willing to answer them. And that's the one that has the standard monthly reports that goes through our different funds, has some numbers by individual basis in terms of both revenue and expense and things. But did you have any questions about that that you maybe had?
Any questions of Scott? Okay. Well done, Scott. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Mike Watson, our UFA report.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Thank you for your time as I present the February fire report. The first slide shows where we land in the hole of UFA's footprint. Station 110 came in the number seven position. That's the same position we were in last month. Station 116 came in the number 13 position. They were in the 15 position last month, so they moved up a bit. Just a friendly reminder that we're showing the staffing levels in all of our heavy apparatus per each station. You can see where our 24-hour ambulances are and how those are staffed, as well as where the peak load ambulances are. And we have just marked the seasonal ambulance at 116 is seasonal in that way so that we don't forget. So I hope that's helpful. Here are the fire calls. These are both stations combined for the month. They closed at 42. You can see that where that compares to February's going back five years. Medical calls closed at 133 for both stations. And again, you can see how that compares for the past five Februaries. Then here is our look at Station 116. Total 110 calls, 83 of which were medicals, 27 were fires. And as you can see, the averages, when compared to the 12-month, were below the 12-month in the total and medical calls, just a titch above the 12-month in the fire call category. Station 116, same data view. They closed at 65 total calls. 50 were the medical portion and 15 were fires. So again, when you compare that to the 12-month average, the total and medicals were, the total was below the 12-month. 50 for medicals, right at the average, and then just a little bit below the average on fire calls compared to the 12-month. Here are medical calls by type. We always pull out the top three, which are fire falls, excuse me, in the number-one category, traffic accidents in the number-two category, number-three category where the sick person calls. And you can read through the rest of those categories at your leisure. We'll compare them now to last February. You can see a couple of similar categories, falls and traffic accidents. Sick person was in the number-three position this year. Last year, it was tied for falls in the number-one position. Here are fire calls by type. So number-one category were alarms. That's usual. Number-two is the flooding, hydrant, and public assist. We had a four-way tie for number-two. And you can see what those categories looked like in the comparison to past February. In that four-way tie category for third, we just ran out of room to put all of the categories. So you'll have to page back to the previous one to see all those, if you will. Here is Station 110 with their ambulance transports. This is a bit unusual in that they transported 37 of their 45 ALS calls. That's 82%. However, now it's gonna wash with how unusual it is that we only transported two of the 38 basic life support calls. That's 5%. In the total of it, when you combine the two categories with transports, we're at 47%. And when we go to their ambulance transports by month, you can see that they had, they closed with a total of 39. 37 of those transports were ALS, again, and two were BLS. And you can see how those compare to the averages. The ALS transports were well above the 12-month average, fairly striking to me. And then the BLS transports, well below the 12-month average. And again, there's our 47% for the month captured along the 12-month snapshot and the 12-month percentage. Here is Zone 116 now. They had 26 total transports, 24 of which were ALS. Two were BLS. And again, you can compare those to the 12-month. Here is the percentage now in a 12-month snapshot for Zone 116. And that's actually playing out quite well. You see they closed at 52 compared to the 12-month of 51.4. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, the safety message is on earthquake preparedness with all of the tremors we have seen in the valley, as well as outside of the valley. 72-hour kit is the very minimum, but they are saying up to seven days to be prepared for those things. The program, the reference here is the drop cover and hold-on. But there's a checklist here that folks can review. And then next month, as I stated, we'll talk about waterways and possible flooding issues with the snowpack. Any questions or assignments for me? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that very much. All right. We have a few action items on our agenda. The first item is consideration of ordinance 318-A. It's approving a general plan amendment for the real property located on 7559 and 7571 South Prospector Drive from low-density residential to medium-density residential. We'll turn some time over to Mike Johnson to introduce the subject and give us a little background.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And this presentation was made a couple meetings ago when this was originally brought to the council for public comments after the planning commission. While that presentation's being loaded, I did confirm and pulled up the code reference for restoration or reconstruction of damaged buildings that are non-complying. So I'll just read that for you quickly here. This is right out of our non-conforming building ordinance. So it says in here, "A non-compliant building or structure, or a building or structure occupied by non-conforming use which is damaged or destroyed by fire, flood, wind, earthquake, or other calamity or act of God or the public enemy, may be restored and the occupancy or use of such building, structure, or part thereof, which existed at the time of such damage or destruction, may be continued or resumed." So I apologize for the confusion with that provision, but if it's involuntarily damaged or destroyed, it can be restored to that extent. If it's voluntarily damaged or redeveloped or torn down, then any non-conforming structure must comply with the code in place.
And sorry, one question.
Yeah.
I know somebody mentioned there's a timeframe. You had to do that within a year where it went back to the current, or it went to the current zoning. Is that, it didn't sound like there's a timeline there.
It goes on. Generally, with any non-conforming use, if that use is vacant for a period of one year, it loses its non-conforming status. That's where the one-year came from. But there are certain provisions that I could read on, I just didn't. One of those is if it's voluntarily destroyed, then that provision does not apply.
And if I may add...
And if I may add, that state code as well, that one-year provision for non-conforming uses as well, so.
Would I be correct in assuming that that means they could restore it to the previous state? They couldn't expand on the use? They couldn't make a two-story home? If it was a one-story home, they could expand it and square footage, it could be restored back to what it was when it was destroyed?
Correct. Right. So that's in a general sense, non-conforming buildings and uses citywide. That's the provision that applies. So again, apologize for any confusion on that. The, the current proposal that's in front of you tonight is, is a proposal for a land use map amendment. That's the land use designation in our general plan, as well as a zone map amendment. And the zone map is what actually changes the ordinance on the property. But we, it's our policy that, you know, we want the, the land use designation and the zoning designation to be compatible, which is why you have both applications in front of you. The subject property is, is on Prospector Drive, right at the fork where, where Wasatch Boulevard, where it comes off of Wasatch Boulevard there. And, and this is the current and proposed land use designation of the properties and of the area. You can see right now, the, the area in general, the land use designation is residential low-density. That's a land use that is compatible generally with R18, R110, single-family residential uses. The current zoning is R18 on this property, as well as the properties north and south of this. And again, the proposed zoning is R28, which would allow for two-family structure per 8,000 square foot legal building lot. What, what's a little odd about this area is while the zoning and the land use designation in the existing area is generally single-family, low-density, the, the built environment does not consistently reflect that. There's a mix of single-family homes and two-family dwellings that have been constructed and exist, existed prior to Cottonwood Heights becoming a city, which is why you have some of these properties considered non-conforming, two-family uses. The, the lot itself also has some challenges, which does not make it conducive to any sort of, you know, further subdivision or further densification. There's a fault line running through the lot, as well as steep slopes. So anything on the graphic here to the back, on the right side of the orange and red area is steep slope that's unbuildable. The red line is the surveyed fault line, and then the orange area would be the false setback area. And you can see a blue, there's a, a blue hatching pattern on the northwest portion of this property, which actually represents about the only functionally buildable area on the entire two parcels. Because of this, and, and these two parcels total to one acre, so even a two-family.
Can I ask one question? The, on the lower lot, the further south lot, that's a very steep hill.
Right.
So is, is, would it be correct to assume even with a significant investment in retention, you still could not get a buildable piece on that, or is that?
The sensitive lands ordinance for the city states that if there's natural slopes of 30% or greater on a lot, that portion of the lot is undevelopable.
And you can't retain it, you can't remove, and this qualifies as that?
Right. And then the fault area obviously adds to that as well. So, so given.
If you completely threw out the sensitive lands ordinance, though, then it would be amazing.
I, I mean, yeah, I guess there could be an engineering solution to pretty much any problem. So yes, but we do have that.
I understand it's torture.
Right. So again, there's the adjacent properties. And, and I'll just lay out, you can see staff's recommendation is approval. This is the recommendation that we took into the planning commission hearing. This was before any public comment was taken. As we reviewed it, we felt that, given the, the geologic and geographic constraints on the lot, what we ultimately would have here now is one unit on one acre. That's very low-density. With the zone change, we would have two units on one acre. That's still very low-density, even though the density is clustered into one building. Because of the constraints on the lot and because of the, the built environment and the context in the area that, that does have two-family residential dwellings, we felt that the request was reasonable and was justified. And that's why, as staff, we recommended approval to the planning commission. The planning commission then took public comment and, and deliberated. And based on their deliberation, they recommended denial, a vote of five to one. And that's the recommendation that was forwarded to the city council. Some of the rationale that we heard, and that's been provided to you in your minutes documentations, there was some concern of spot zoning. Just on the merit of this graphic alone, the, the new zone looks out of context with the rest of the area. That's not an illegal proposal. It was just a, a matter of principle to some of the, the members of the planning commission. However, staff's analysis took into account more of the, you know, the, the built environment and how it, you know, what it looks like and how it was developed. Another rationale given was concern of future use as a short-term rental. As was pointed out to, to the commission and to the city council, whether it's a single-family home under the current zoning, whether it's a two-family home, short-term rentals are not allowed. No legal permit would be granted under either zoning for a short-term rental on this property. So while the applicant may have stated that that might be the intent, it is, it is an illegal use of that property and would not be allowed there. And the, the third rationale that we took away from the planning commission's recommendation is voluntary redevelopment of surrounding land is still required to be single-family residential. Any questions?
Any final questions of Mike? Okay.
Yes, I did have one. You, I believe you mentioned that there was an application in process to actually consolidate these lots.
Yes.
Is that completed?
I, I do not believe, I think it's pending the outcome of this process.
Really?
I, I don't know. The applicant is here, but, but no, we have not recorded a consolidation plat on these properties yet.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Before the council, now we have a consideration of an ordinance, 318-A, which we've now been presented. I would intertation of a motion of approval of general plan amendment for the real property located at the address stated. Do we have that motion by chance? Okay. Hearing that there's not a motion for approval, do we have a motion for denial?
This is, this is a difficult one, but I'm going to move to deny the general plan amendment for real property located at 7559-7571.
Okay. Ordinance 318-D, which is a motion to deny the general plan amendment for the, the property as so stated. Do we have a second?
So I, I'd like to point out that we will potentially be reviewing the entire general plan over the next year. So stay involved with your city council this next year. And I will second the motion to deny.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Michael. It's been seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Let me get on the right paper here. Need to switch. Again, it's been moved by Councilmember Michael and seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further discussion?
Yeah, this one, this one has been a very, very tough one for me. Our level of, of decision is we must have, have a rational reason behind the way that we vote. Personally, I have a little bit of concern that the lot isn't actually consolidated. That's given me a bit of pause. As I stated last time, I do, I, I think I would probably prefer a larger, a more general, general plan. If that's what we opted to do when we did the general plan, I, I probably am fine with that. That would be something where we would take public comment.
Thank you, Councilman Bracken. Further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Michael.
No.
Yay.
Yay. Yay, sorry.
Yes, to deny.
I'm not, I've never had a denial. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that's been denied. And I will state, along with Councilmember Bracken, this was a tough one a little bit. But I think with the comments of the residents, the position of the planning commission, and I always give some weight to the local council district representative and therefore support that decision. And as Councilmember Bruce said too, was looking at the general plan going forward. It's something that obviously needs some adjustments. With that denial, item 5.2, well, we will not need a vote on that. And Shane, am I right?
You're correct.
Okay. Moving to item 5.3, consideration of ordinance 320, approving amendment to our 2018-19 budget.
I move that we approve ordinance 320.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken, seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is Resolution 2019-17, approving disposal of unclaimed property and former evidence. Tim, you want to introduce that subject before we vote?
I'll defer to Chief Bruce, I'll let him present that.
Okay.
This is property and evidence that has been lost, stolen, or otherwise seized and is ready for disposal from our evidence room. The law allows us to appropriate, appropriate it back to our use. We've chosen never to do that, auction or destroy the property. In this case, we are asking for the property to be sold at auction and the funds returned to the city. When, with that, we ask that you support that resolution.
Those funds go to the general fund, correct?
They do. It's, you know, it's taxpayer money, so I can't really donate it.
I guess my point of clarification goes to the general fund of the city, not back directly to the police department?
No. All incoming funds go back to the city.
Goes to the general fund, then it can be reallocated or rebudgeted, yeah.
Correct.
Any further discussion on that resolution? Hearing that, I'd call for the motion.
I move that we approve Resolution 2019-17.
It's been moved by Councilmember Shelton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Michael. Any further discussion?
Can we look into donating? Is that a possibility?
There is a process of donating, but you go through the Doug Short Rule and we can always talk about it. Yeah, it's, there's been problems historically in local governments where you donate things because it gets abused. So there is a process, but it has to be through a budgeting process. Tim, do you know, do you remember?
Yeah, it, it has to be through a budgeting process. The, the issue with donating is you have to designate who you're donating to and, and the rationale for that. And it has to be a fair process. You can't donate to certain groups and not allow other opportunities. So it makes it very problematic to do that if we're donating, unless we go through a budget process and specify who we are donating to.
In, in the budget process.
In the budget process.
Lynn Cross, maybe you and I could get together, do a GoFundMe, raise some funds, go to the auction, buy the bikes, and donate them.
There we go. Shane, any further clarification on that, or is that your understanding?
No. There needs to be basically a quid pro quo, running back to the city in many cases.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Shelton, seconded by Councilmember Michael. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is Resolution 2019-18. It's proven inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County for our municipal election services. For the audience's information, this election will also include the cost of the referendum that will be potentially here in November.
It provides for that possibility.
For that possibility, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion on this resolution?
Move that we approve Resolution 2019-18.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any last discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, that is the last of the action items. Other than, we have a consent calendar, which includes the minutes of February 19th, 2019. Could we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar by Councilmember Shelton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bruce. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion to adjourn. The move, we adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. I thought everybody said no, but.